Starting with number one, Resolution eight dash twenty-two, Mr. Crandall, Public Disclosure.
Mr. Chairman, this is one that that the councilman may not be as as aware of as I am only because it is it is really just a formality. It is a one of those public disclosure resolutions where a county employee and this county employee happens to live in Mr. Crandall's district. Is requesting a variance before the Office of Administrative Hearings and as such is required to have a resolution before the County Council that publicly discloses that fact. So I'm sorry to throw you the curve, Mr. Mr. Crandall, but that that is what the resolution is about and the person's name is Derek La Pasta.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Bostwick has handled that adequately.
All right, moving right along and I guess we don't have Mr. Stevens, Baltimore County Design Review Panel Appointment.
That is correct as well, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Stevens is not able to attend today, but he will be available and attend the legislative session next Monday. If the council has any questions of him.
Okay, moving right along to additional reappointment through the Baltimore County Design Review Panel. We have Joe and Kelly E.
And I believe Mr. Yusufaro and Ms. Ennis are on today, sir.
Okay. Mr. Yusufaro, any comments, sir? We appreciate your service.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I've been working here in Baltimore County for about nineteen years. I've been serving on the Design Review Panel for the last three. And excited so long as the council approves to be serving another three. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your service and certainly appreciate it very much and recognize the importance of the Design Review Panels and, of course, your nineteen years of service. Next, moving along to Ms. E.
Hi.
Hi.
I I echo what Joe said as well. I appreciate being involved in the panel. I too have been in the built environment in design, architecture and construction for about twenty-two years. And I'm happy to serve an additional three if the council so approves that. So thank you.
Thank you so much. You worked here for nineteen years, too?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. Twenty-two. So again, thank you so much for your work on the Design Review Panel and certainly appreciate your service to the citizens. Both of your services to the citizens of Baltimore County, we certainly appreciate it very much. We have to talk, we have to talk with county executives and Director Blades about, we get watches or something for like twenty years of service? I'm serious.
I didn't get one. I don't think so.
All right, maybe we need to work on that. We need to come up with something like a watch and then maybe a breakfast, some type of appreciation from employees who reach that milestone. Let's work on that. Twenty, twenty-five and thirty. We ought to work on that. I'll move right along. Next, we'll move on to Ms. Laura Rau. Bill one dash twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars to the CARES Act Title VII Funding Gifts and Grants. The funds will be used to expand the department's virtual presence during the pandemic to provide ombudsman-related activities, which is advocacy, education and complaint investigation for residents of long-term care facilities. We expect to be able to purchase equipment to be able to virtually work with client residents of these facilities as well as purchase PPE, dictation software, educational brochures and the like.
Any questions or comments on the members? Thank you. You can move right on to page four, Ms. Rau.
Okay, one moment.
Bill two dash twenty-two.
The administration is requesting supplemental appropriations of federal funds in the amount of three million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and local share program funds of five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to the Older Americans Act American Rescue Plan Gifts and Grant Fund Program. We will be using these funds to provide services authorized under our Title III of the Older Americans Act to currently enrolled and additional eligible clients during the COVID pandemic.
Thank you Phil very, very much. Looking okay, so any questions or comments from the members? Appreciate all that money going through our studios and services they did and deserve. Thank you, sir, so much, Ms. Rau. To move right along to page eight. Director O'Connor.
Good afternoon, Chairman and member of the members of the council. Administration is requesting approval of a contract with Own Computer Services, doing business as Unified Power, to provide preventive maintenance and repair services for the county's uninterruptible power supplies UPS systems. This was a competitive bid award. This infrastructure is critical to county services, powering both of our main computer centers and both of our nine-one-one centers. The contract commences upon council approval, continues for one year and will automatically renew for four additional one-year periods with the option to extend the term or any renewal term for additional one-hundred-and-eighty days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial one-year term or for the entire five-year, six-month term, including the renewals and existing periods. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services for the entire contract term. Estimated compensation totals are three hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the entire five-year, six-month term, including renewals and extension periods.
Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Director O'Connor. You certainly do a good job for us. We appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to page eleven. Dr. Jennifer Lynch, whom we all know your dad. He's a good man. All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chairman and Council Members. I appreciate the time today to present to you a proposal to extend the contract for the multi-year improvement plan for all schools. The County Council previously approved the original contract that allowed Baltimore County Government to commission Canon Design to complete a long-range roadmap for capital construction. Canon engaged in a comprehensive process that included extensive community input and analysis of every school facility in Baltimore County. And as a result of this analysis, Canon Design has provided us with a fifteen-year capital plan based on our two-point-five-billion-dollar budget, including existing Built to Learn funding. However, the landscape of capital planning and funding is evolving quickly. And since the initial approval of the MyIPass contract, the Blueprint for Maryland's Future became law. And more recently, we've become aware of additional state funding through the Healthy School Facility Fund, Built to Learn Funding and the Governor's FY23 Budget. Many of the elements of the blueprint law have implications for capital planning. And for these reasons, we are requesting an extension of the existing MyIPass contract through September of two thousand and twenty-two. This extension will allow Canon Design to provide additional analysis on how we can fully implement the Blueprint for Maryland's Future Law by providing appropriate capital planning for the expansion of CTE, pre-K and community schools. This analysis will also inform the upcoming CIP planning and in addition, will allow us to additional analysis of how we should consider adapting our long-range planning based on the potential availability of new funding. The contract includes consultation, analysis, report generation and meeting participant participation by our Canon consultants would begin upon your approval and continue through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two and extends the maximum compensation by eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to come to a new contract limit of one million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Well, Dr. Lynch, it looks like that new additional funding is on the way.
We're very excited.
So am I, believe we all are. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think there was Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lynch, can you speak to the county executive's announcement today for Delaney and Towson High Schools? How this is incorporated into this request and also just give us some assurances that the stakeholder process for the new Northeast High School, that is, that is still moving forward?
Yes, councilmen. So the Northeast and the Southeast studies are underway. Right now, they are in the phase of developing appropriate options and then the community input phase will begin shortly. Our Office of Community Outreach will also be sure that we are extending invitations and making sure we're elevating that participation so that we have ample opportunities for our community to provide input. We are very excited about the county executive's announcement today. This has been a long process. As we all know, MyIPass was a wonderful comprehensive study of all of our schools, but the plan was based on our two-point-five-billion-dollar existing budget. And we know that that just does not go far enough to provide high-quality schools for all of our communities. The county executive has been working with the governor, the governor's staff, as well as our legislative partners. And with additional funding that we have realized from Built to Learn funding, from the Healthy Schools Facility, as well as from the Governor's one-billion-dollar proposed budget, we feel confident that we can start that elevation and raising the bar for all of our projects, beginning this year with this current FY23 budget. That includes a new Delaney High School. It also includes flipping our Scotts Branch Elementary School from a renovation in addition to a new building. And it includes releasing design funding for Towson for a like-new facility.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lynch. I really appreciate that. And I thank the county executive. I thank Governor Hogan as well for working on this and his staff. You know, I said to several reporters today, this this Towson High School was one of the last things that I hadn't seen a resolution on as I prepared to leave as Towson's councilman. And I'm really happy with this announcement and that that we are moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's almost like Christmas, girl. Any additional question? Oh, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So is the correct salutation, Dr. Lynch?
Sure. I'll take whatever, but Dr. Lynch works for me.
Dr. Lynch, so thank you. And I think my colleagues and I were all very pleased to hear about Delaney High School and Towson High School. And so the next up, the next batter up in terms of schools, and you mentioned it a little bit. And I'm going to speak on behalf of my friend and school board member Cheryl Pastore, who's been a strong advocate for CTE on the west side of Baltimore County. So I think that would be a spectacular third announcement. And as I think you mentioned, CTE is part of what Canon will be looking at. And so we're hoping for for that component of education on the west side of Baltimore County and
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to.
Oh, no worries. Just again, to repeat what I said earlier. As you know, Cheryl Pastore is also a strong advocate for this.
Yes, yes, she is. And she's done some wonderful work, really elevating the need for a Northwest CTE program. And we're happy to announce that there is five hundred thousand dollars in this year's capital budget proposed by the Board of Education for a study for CTE planning, for CTE solution in the Northwest area. Baltimore County Public Schools has already begun that process by starting to evaluate existing and potential CTE programs. And so we're really looking forward to that.
I think Cheryl's vision is a standalone CTE.
Yes. And you know, there are multiple solutions. And I think the first step is to identify the needs of the community and of our students as to what CTE programs are going to be most appropriate for our students in that area and then determining the appropriate capital solution that that is best for whatever those educational needs are in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the, any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much, Dr. Lynch. And we will move on to page fifteen. It's Susan Durden.
Good afternoon. The administration is seeking approval of six contracts to provide real estate appraisal services for the county projects as needed. The six contractors are Cloudwalker Enterprises LLC, which is doing business as Everett Benfield Advisors, Associated Appraisers LLC, Caralex LLC, which is doing business as Treffer Appraisal Group, Karen H. Belinko Appraisals LLC, Peabody and Associates LLC and S.H. Muller and Associates LLC. Each of the contracts will commence upon council approval and continue for one year. All of them contain renewal options for four additional one-year periods. And at the end of any term, they provide for an option for the county to extend it for an additional one-hundred-and-twenty days. The contracts don't specify a maximum compensation for the initial one-year term or the entire five-year and four-month term. Compensation for all the contractors combined may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services. And estimated contractors, estimated compensation, excuse me, is estimated to be thirty-eight thousand for the initial term and one-hundred-and-ninety thousand over the entire term.
Any questions or comments from the members? Okay, moving right along to Mr. Andrea Walker. You can keep those streets clear. Ms. Walker?
We've been working on it, sir. We've been working on it. Hopefully.
Oh, just the warm-up, just the warm-up.
Don't say that. Don't say that.
I hope it doesn't come today. You can handle it, I'm sure.
We're we're gonna stay at it. We're gonna stay at it. How about that?
Sounds great.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of an amendment to a contract with Bel Air Auto Auction to continue to provide our auction and simulcast services for the sale of our surplus county-owned vehicles, trucks and equipment. That equipment can include things like tremors, mores, as well as generators, as well as our vehicles on an as-needed basis. The proposed amendment increases the maximum compensation by one-hundred-and-fifty thousand from two-hundred thousand to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. The contract itself provides at least one auction per month, including advertising and simulcasting services to enable bidders not to require to be physically present at the auction to bid through the internet. The contractor is paid a percentage of the sell price and there's a fifty-dollar per simulcast session. The proposed amendment is necessary due to the unusually high proceeds the county has received through the sale of our retired vehicles and equipment because of pandemic-related supply issues have spawned a demand for used vehicles and equipment bringing more money at the auction, which increases the associated auction fee that we are required to pay. Since the contract's inception, we should note that we've sold approximately a thousand vehicles and equipment at auction and we expect to sell approximately one-hundred-and-ninety additional vehicles through the remainder of the contract. This contract was a competitive bid contract when we did bid it and we're just looking for an extension at this time. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members? None. Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. We certainly appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
I know, I know that you and Ms. Rogers and many others have been spending some late hours or waking up early and preparing for the storms and making decisions that all the rest of us are sleeping and I appreciate it very much. Appreciate you too, Director Blades, who are there for me when I need you. No matter what time it is. Thank you.
You're most welcome, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Moving on to page twenty-two, Director Blade.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, members of council. The Office of Budget and Finance in the Department of Aging is requesting a budget appropriation transfer in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars from contingency reserve to local shares. Earlier in work session, Director Riley reviewed the supplemental appropriation for the American Rescue Plan Act Title III Grant Funding. This is the match. We had sufficient, we had roughly two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars available in local shares for the five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-dollar match. This is the balance of funding coming from contingency into local share to cover the full match of five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the members? And we will write along to page twenty-five. Councilmembers Crandall and Mark. The Maryland General Assembly, Resolution five dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. I appreciate it. You know, from time to time, the the council is faced on an issue that actually is a matter for the General Assembly. And we have in the past, when we feel that a matter is is so important to Baltimore County and our constituents, that we feel compelled to offer a resolution in support of legislation that is pending in the General Assembly. And this Resolution five twenty-two is just that. The resolution concerns a matter that has been going on for probably around twenty years or so, which is the potential dredging of Manawar Shoal. And if you read the the materials associated with this, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Bostwick and Mr. Phillips for their very thorough understanding of the of the matter that is spelled out in the resolution itself. And I think that our county auditor's office has also done a good job in the fiscal note to explain the the history and the necessity of bringing this issue to light. And I was, and I'm of the hope that our, my colleagues on the council would support this, that it is really a council-wide issue. And the matter, the matter concerns the last prehistoric oyster reef on Baltimore, in Baltimore County or in the Upper Chesapeake Bay in southeastern Baltimore County waters. And that is the potential dredging of Manawar Shoal, which, as I mentioned, is the last living, the last shoal of its type in the upper bay. It seems that every year since two thousand and four, really, that the Department of Natural Resources seeks a permit to dredge the shoal. And once you start dredging the shoal, the the, it can never be replaced. And I could speak on this issue. I have a volume of information that I've developed over the years with this particular issue. But I've asked our administrator if she could wear a, she should show a video that really speaks to the issue and conveys the 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 lack of support for the dredging of the of the shoal and the fight that's been going on for years. And just so you, for your justification, Delegate Grammar has submitted a bill in the House. It's HB five hundred that would put this issue to rest. And my co-sponsor, David Marks, is well aware of this. And we thought that this deserved a county resolution to the General Assembly in support of the resolution. So if I could, again, indulge the council in in watching this video for a few minutes, I would would appreciate it. Thank you, Chris, for putting that up.
Do we have volume?
My apologies. I need to unmute myself and then you'll be able to hear it. Hold on just a second. My apologies. Let's try this one more time.
Yes. Yeah, I'm still not getting audio.
I don't. I'm not really sure why we do not have audio. I've never shared a video before. I can certainly try it again. I have myself unmuted. I can hear, I can hear the video, but no one else can. Give me one second and let me see if I can get this resolved.
Chris, I think on the Vimeo site itself, there is a way to unmute the video.
Okay, but I mean, it is unmuted. I can hear it playing. It's, give me one second. Let me try it again.
If that does not work, if that doesn't work, what you can do is right-click on your microphone and go into settings and take off the speaker and turn on the line in, which may be that video.
Mr. Secretary, while they're working out this technical issue, can you add my name to that resolution, please?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah.
All right, please let me know if you can hear it.
Mr. Bostwick, I'll I'll join as well. This is Councilman Quirk. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I still don't have audio on this. That, I got back to you.
Give me one moment.
Okay. In the interest of time, while you're working, can we hear from one of the speakers or Councilman Marks? Do you have any remarks?
Yeah, I'm I'm here. I'm here.
You have any remarks about the
Julian? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I would add is I think back to two thousand and nineteen when we interceded to oppose the Mountain Branch, I'm sorry, the Mountain Christian Church from dumping wastewater into the Gunpowder River. And, you know, that was kind of outside of our comfort zone a bit, I think, a bit. But it was an important issue. Several of us on the council represent parts of the Gunpowder River watershed. And by the council interceding, I think we got the state's attention and that plan was dropped. There are times when I think it's appropriate for the County Council to weigh in on state legislation, and this is certainly one of those times. So I'd like to thank Councilman Crandall for his work, for our state legislators who are leading the charge and for all of the environmental advocates who are supporting this action.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to be a co-sponsor and urge the rest of the council to co-sponsor so it can be a council resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. And I tell you, if you, if you know, I may be there with you. If you just don't mind, I like to do a little more due diligence on my own, just to figure out what we're talking about.
I'd be happy to jump on as a sponsor, provided that the the video is is appropriate.
Mean has sound.
If we can't work out the technical difficulties, I can be sure to send you a link to that video. And I know that we have some speakers that are been engaged in this for a long time that can provide additional information if we're not able to get the video volume up and up and running.
Okay, can I ask, Chris, we could always play this at the council meeting as well, correct?
Yes.
I'm actually, I'm actually getting some tech help. It's only going to take me about two minutes. If you guys want to be patient just for two minutes.
Okay. Chris, do you mind if we hear from Karen Wynn while we wait?
I was actually just kidding, Mr. Chair. I I'll sponsor with or without the video.
Mr. Chair, I, well, I know that Chris is busy. Mr. Chair, well, I know that Chris is busy trying to work out technical issues on this and I do apologize for that. She was not aware of my request to put the video up until late last week. So, but if you, in the matter of time, if you wanted to move on to the speakers, if, Chris, I know that she has to take her way from working with IT on the video itself, in the interest of time, I have no objection to you working or to hearing from our speakers that have signed up.
I certainly have no objection to that. Let me see if I could, I see our first speaker is Karen Nguyen. And I'm not sure if I can unmute this one, but I'm gonna try.
Oh.
I cannot.
Okay.
Chris, can you unmute our first speaker, Karen Nguyen?
Yeah, I'm kind of multitasking here. I'm on the phone with Rob O'Connor and I'm trying to call speakers. So you guys, you got me hopping today. Give me one second. Our first speaker is Karen Nguyen. Let me get Ms. Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, you may begin your testimony.
Okay. Hi, my name's Karen Nguyen, Maryland Waterways Foundation. I'm also a member of Coastal Conservation Association. I'm all for stopping of the dredging. Dredging Manowar Shoal will provide very little help to any oyster population increase and will cause instead great damage to very important fish habitat. Manowar is made up of between eighty and a hundred million bushels of fossil oyster shell. It's been dredged in the past of a hundred and eighty-five million bushels shell between nineteen sixty and two thousand six with only temporary solutions if that where it's been used. There's other substrates that can be used that have as good of effect, if not better, work equally as well at a lower cost without damage to our Upper Chesapeake Bay. Other resources, our oyster resources have been overharvested, unregulated, and dredged in the past, removing oyster bars to no avail, leaving holes in our Chesapeake Bay. So it is very imperative that we not repeat the mistakes that we've made in the past and instead protect our most natural resources, our most important natural resources in the Upper Chesapeake Bay. Thank you.
You very much, Ms. Nguyen. We certainly appreciate your time and your testimony.
Thank you.
Chris, we're ready for Sam Weaver.
Actually, I'm gonna play, we're gonna get this video up for you right now. Give me one second.
Okay. Do you have to change your audio setting?
No, I'm gonna. I'm sending it to, and he is going to play it up. And then I will call the next speaker and then we will go ahead and play the video for the councilman. Okay, I'm gonna call the next speaker and then we will play the councilman's video. So our next speaker is Sam Weaver. Mr. Weaver's listed on our attendee list, but I am not able to unmute him. Is he on by phone, councilman?
I see him. I see his name.
Yeah, but he can't, he doesn't have a microphone next to his name. Councilman Crandall.
If you're listening, press some buttons on your phone or computer.
There's no one else on by phone. Okay. So I'm looking for Rob O'Connor. I'm gonna make him a presenter and he's gonna play the video. In the meantime, we'll see if Mr. Weaver can get on. We still don't have volume.
Is this video only to be played through remote and played through YouTube? Maybe the source.
According to Mr. O'Connor, there's an option on WebEx that I do not have that he has. That's why I sent him the video link. I don't have the option of unmuting the video on my WebEx.
Yeah, and it's not allowing me to unmute either for some reason in the presentation mode.
Councilman Crandall, I think this is a fake video anyway. Did you see them steamed crabs? They had no seasoning on them.
Well, I think, again, in the interest of time, I'm gonna send the link out to the council members in advance. And I do appreciate the members who have agreed to co-sponsor the bill. This, we're just obviously having some technical difficulties with, with trying to get this up and running. Perhaps we can deal with those in time for the legislative session. But, Chris, if you.
Put the link in the chat as well so that all the attendees can see it.
Okay, I will do that as Chris finds Mr. Weaver, who I believe if you bring, Chris, if you bring Ms. Nguyen back on, Mr. Weaver can use her microphone.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor, for all your help. And I guess I'll coordinate with somebody to try to get this issue resolved for the legislative.
Yeah, we'll get a resolve for WebEx presentations. It works in meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your efforts.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've just, Councilman Crandall, what is the genesis of the name Manowar? Is it, was it a site of a battle or something?
That's a good question, Councilman. I, I'm not the historian that I maybe could be, so I'm unaware of the genesis of the name. But if you look at an article map of the Chesapeake Bay, there are a lot of different underground structures and shoals that have historic, AT cattle shoals comes to mind. But you'll have to, you'll have to put your historian hat on and do some Googling in the near time on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay. Is Mr. Weaver on?
Yes.
Okay. You may begin, Mr. Weaver.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I'd just like to say that the video will explain most of what we're all trying to say. But one of the things that I'd like to contribute to it is that we spent millions doing this years ago. It hasn't worked. We're gonna spend millions again, send it down to the people on the eastern shore, and they're gonna sell us product that we paid to take down there. It just doesn't make any sense. But please watch the video. It is very educational. You'll understand everything as soon as you see the video. That's about all I have to say about it.
And the website for that video is savemanowar.org.
Yes, I also posted the link in the chat for everyone to see. So the link is there for anyone who wants to watch the video.
Thank you.
Thanks for everybody's patience on this. It's, again, a longstanding issue that can come to an end and to a a positive end for the residents of Baltimore County and people that care about the Chesapeake Bay. So I appreciate everyone's input on this and, and again, for their patience.
If I, if I could, Councilman Crandall, who is proposing to dredge the Manowar? At the Department of Natural Resources?
The, in the past, I'm not aware that there is a current permit application, but in the past, the Department of Natural Resources has sought these permits from, from the state and from the Army Corps of Engineers.
I have the definition of Manowar.
Oh, lovely to hear.
Councilman.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's actually, I don't know, it looks like a jellyfish. A Manowar comprises four separate polyps. It gets its name from the uppermost polyp, a gas-filled bladder, which sits above the water and somewhat resembles an old warship at full sail. Manowar wars are also known as blue bottles for the purple-blue color of this creature. It's really kind of cool looking. I don't know if you can see that on my phone.
Yeah.
So I don't know what that has to do with the name, but that's what a Manowar is.
And I know that they're very poisonous. If you're in the ocean, you don't want to touch it.
They're from Portugal.
Yes, Portuguese Manowar, right. Thank you.
And then they use, it says they used, Manowar comes from the eighteenth century sailing warship because of the resemblance of the animal's Portuguese version. So it all has to do with the look of that. It's pretty interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another fact that we all can hold on to in case we ever make it to the end. Mr. Castro, do we have another speaker?
Mr. Chair, our last final speaker for today is Agape Storm. But the name that matches the email that we have on record is Wanda Williams. So let me call him now. Are you there?
I'm here.
You may begin your testimony.
Um, the only reason why the government exists is to protect our rights. And during this pandemic, you guys have done a horrendous job of protecting our rights as Baltimore County residents. And we're done. The Baltimore County residents are banding together and we're done. We're done with the masking of the kids. We're done with the testing. We're done with the vaccination clinics at the school. We're done. COVID is over. We are done. Do you understand? Oh, you think it's funny, Mr. Jones? You think it's funny?
I don't think it's funny. I just find it a little, a little tiny bit interesting that you say the only function of government is to protect people. I mean, we have schools, we have roads, we have fire, we have police, we have nine-one-one, we have all sorts of things, but you're focusing in.
You have a lot of responsibilities, but your job is to protect our rights. That's what you're supposed to do. Okay?
Okay.
The mask, when the children need to go, you want to know why the children are acting up in schools and they're having behavioral issues? Because you have the masks like dogs. Take the mask off the children. They don't work. We know they don't work. That's why you're, it took the CDC two years to figure out that, oh, wait, the cloth masks don't work? We now have to switch to N ninety-five masks? It took them two years to figure that out, but they can put a whole rover on Mars? Really? What are these people doing with all the money that they're getting from the government? I don't understand. They need to take the mask off the children. It's bad for them. They need oxygen because they have growing brains. CO2 poisoning in your blood does not help you think. The children need to be on masks. The vaccination clinics in the schools need to stop. Stop coercing people to get these vaccines when they don't have full informed consent. The informed consent doesn't mention anything about sudden heart attacks, blood clots that can go straight to your brain and kill you. Do you know how many children have died from this vaccine so far? Mr. Jones, you keep smiling. You think that it's funny.
Mr. Jones.
Do you know that a child actually died in Montgomery County from this vaccine? Do you know that?
Listen, with this respect, I'm not laughing at you. I am smiling because I often smile. Just go ahead with your testimony.
Kathy, nothing is funny.
What does this have to do with Manowar Resolution, Mr. Chairman?
I'm waiting. Maybe we'll get to it in a minute.
It has nothing to do with the Manowar Shoals and everyone who is, and everyone who is on here, Mr. Chairman, knows that the purpose of the work session is for people to give public input on matters that are before the council, that are on the council's agenda. And the purpose of the legislative session after the work session is to give persons the opportunity to testify on anything they would like for three minutes. So clearly, this person is not testifying on anything before the council and really should have testified or signed up to testify at the legislative session on February seventh, but we are where we are.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
If I could, if I could, Councilman Catch.
We don't do this for any other work session.
I certainly agree, and we certainly don't want this to be a habit because you're absolutely right, Mr. Boswick. There's a time and place for that. This is not it. Two L caller, are you done?
Yes, I'm done. I'll come back on the seventh.
Thank you so much. Councilman Catch.
Yeah, I, maybe it has to do with the emergency legislation that the administration put in, but pulled. Maybe that's what she's commenting on, not knowing that it had been pulled by the administration.
Very well be. If it was, the administration has decided not to move forward with the, with the state of emergency. All the metrics are moving in the right direction and the administration felt it necessary to pull that bill and remove the indoor mask mandate and other things. So any additional questions or comments from the members? And we thank the caller for your comments. And it's important that we hear from everyone. And I think there's a time and place for it, but, you know, it's okay. Any additional questions or comments from the members before we adjourn? Thank you very much and everybody have a great evening and see you next week. All right.